Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the. My laptop feedback sound there we go. If anybody's. Laptop audio is not muted. We're going to hear myself and yourself. The joys of technology. So while we're out muting people's laptops, I'll call this meeting in order. It's Wednesday, January 18th, and this is a special meeting of council for the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation shareholders meeting. The first item on the agenda. Are is asking if there's any conflict of interest. Seeing none. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. So I have a motion here moved by councillor Meredith seconded by councillor Bolt that the contents of the special meeting of council. Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation annual general meeting agenda for January 18th, 2023 be approved. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries. And IT voted to, which is good. Alright, so item four on the agenda is. The Midland Bay Landing annual report to shareholder January 18, 2023, a presentation. But the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation annual report to the shareholder dated January 18th, 2023 receives information which we will. Do after we've called them to the. Mike, I am assuming. That's my motion for before or after the mic. Four point one. After very good. Alright, I see Mr. Hernahan in the in the room. And we'll we invite you to the podium, and I believe we have your PowerPoint slides ready to go. And we'll turn it over to you.
There we go. Good afternoon, I guess we'll still call it to. Your worship and councillors, pleasure to be with you today to talk about Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation and report to you. As you are the shareholder of the corporation. So today we have a brief agenda next slide. So on today's agenda, we're going to talk about our achievements in 2022. Our action plan for 23. The audit statements for 2021. And then our financial report to November the 30th this year. Next. So as you know, we were mighty busy in 2022. In January, we worked with our real estate development consultant to put together a. Request for prequalifications to the marketplace. And that was widely advertised to approximately 600 folks across Canada and even advertised in Europe. To ensure that we met other town procurement protocols. That that was put out in the market, we received four proposals. With our consultant, they reviewed and analyzed those and three shortlisted consultants were proponents were proposed to move forward. In May, or sorry, in March, we issued a request for proposal, which was the second stage of the two-stage process. And that request for proposal went to the three shortlisted folks. And they prepared their submission. Which included both a financial and a technical submission. That was submitted in May, evaluated, and then we came to council. At we're planning the end of June, but it actually turned out to be the 5th of July. And we came to council and recommended that council approve the recommended developer being Georgian communities from Barry. As the recommended developer to proceed. On July the 5th, as you know, council approved entering into a letter of intent with Georgian communities. And so that initiated the process that we're now under, which is the exclusivity period, but we'll come back to that in a moment. During that, so after that. It was approved. Now then we're in the exclusivity period and that initially was 120 days. And during that period, the purpose of that. Was for the developer to do further due diligence on the property and the feasibility. When they put together the proposal, it was about a six-week period. So they had to work very quickly on both a conceptual plan and a financial plan. Knowing that there was a second part to this, which was the due diligence period. So they we've been working with them throughout that period along with town. We've conducted some meetings with them along with the town again. And they continue to do their work. And one of the important things that happened very early on. Was that their proposal, which was widely circulated publicly showed no public park in the east end of the property. Well, with our feedback. They responded and said, okay, we hear you that that's a very important element. So there is. A park in the east end of the property now. So during that period, we engaged with the real estate lawyers, which we didn't have. So we engaged them. To assist us in this very large transaction for the town. To assist us with the preparation of the letter of intent before it was closed, and that was part of the RFP process. And then after that process, we've been working with them through. The development of an agreement of purchase and sale for phase one and an option agreement for phase two. And throughout that, we've been liaising with them and with the town on these documents. Next slide please. So while we were pursuing this process of procurement of a developer, which was a significant. Piece of work for the town, we want to ensure that we engaged a fairness monitor. To make sure that this process was open and fair. We engaged a consulting firm who monitored this right through the process. From the original RFPQ through the RFP process and the evaluation process to ensure that it continue to be. Open and fair. At the end of that, the consultant said to us, you ran a very fair and open process and they had no issues. Anytime during the process that there were questions to be asked. Or answers to be provided. We worked through them to ensure that. All of these were not adding any new information to the process. This were clarifications only, a very important part. Of the procurement process that we don't alter anything throughout the process. So they work with us on that and. We've now, as you know. Because of the point at which the 180 days expired, which was in November. You were in that awkward awkward period of being in an election and you didn't have. Authority to enter into agreements such as this. So we extended the letter of intent exclusivity period until January, and as you know, we've now extended it further. Into March to allow for a new ingredient, which is a public engagement sessions before. You we are going to come to you with a proposal to recommend. Executing an agreement of purchase and sale. So we heard loud and clear that this was important to the public and we've agreed to do that. So as you know, already been widely advertised, there are going to be two sessions, one on February the 4th and one on February the 11th. So that's that's the process that's been added and we've changed. While we were going through last year with the the town was really directing this, but finally, at the end of a long period from the ministry. The town received and we were the beneficiaries of it that. Two important things. First of all, the certificate of property use, and then finally, the record of site condition. Which really designates how. The owner of the property being the town. And then ultimately, the developer. Or whatever stage they're in becomes responsible for all the mitigation measures that are contained in both the certificate of property use and really the record of site condition. That was a huge step in the process. And we were working as diligently as we could. We couldn't push too much with the ministry, as you well know, Andy. But this was a really important piece for anybody in the development business to reduce the risk of understanding what. That contamination might be and how you had to deal with it. Because without that knowledge, it became a huge risk. And risk usually has a huge price to it. Then having gotten that in late November. And we provided the developers. This certificate of property use during the process, so they had it before they submitted their proposal. And then just on a financial basis. We reported in 2021 that we operated $117,000 under the budget. That was approved that year, and this year we're forecasting to be just under the budget in the in the order of $12,000 under the budget. Next slide. So that was last year. So last year was extremely busy. In fact, if you did the math from January to July in six months. We worked through the market and were able to find a developer that. First of all, had the competency, second of all, had the the team in place. And was really interested in partnering with the town to develop this site. That is very fast, especially given that we were all in a COVID period. So we were pretty proud of getting that done that quickly. So in 2023, things are going to change. Now that we anticipate having a developer. And signed up under the. Agreement of purchase and sale. The first thing we're going to do in 23, as you already know. We're going to hold these two public consultation sessions. The first one. Is going to be all about educating the public, similar to what we presented to you as new councillors. To educate the public on the history of Midland Bay Landing, the official plan and all of the things that. I we believe that the public needs more information about to be fully informed. That's good. And then. We're going to do that part, and then we're going to invite Georgian. To present. What their concept plans are. But before we get to that, one of the things we want to do is to talk about. What are the other choices? And we'll talk about some development options at the first meeting. At the end of that. We will we had the education session, we will open it for questions at points throughout the presentation. Then we'll come back the next week on February 11th, which will be very different. This will be a working session. We'll invite all the participants. To sit around tables much as was done at the master plan level, at the official plan level with these public meetings. So they'll all sit and we'll have them with plans so that they can then. Chat together, talk about ideas and put forward ideas. Those ideas we then are going to ask to be presented so that everybody in the room hears them. We'll ask somebody from each table to present what came out of that table and we'll move around the room. So that we hear and record all of those. And then at the end of the meeting. We will then compile all the information along with Georgian. And analyze the information that we get. So that we can determine what did we hear from the public? And that's the whole purpose of this. We want to hear from the public of what. They have in mind or would like to see as part of the Middle Bay Landing redevelopment. So that's in February. Then after that, as we've said to you before, and we publicly announced, the plan is after that that we would come to you, we being the board would come to you, make a recommendation to council. That. We've gone through the public. Process. And now we would like to recommend to you that you enter into an agreement. Of purchase sale for phase one with Georgian. And secondly. With Georgian to then have an option to purchase phase two. But there's another wrinkle to it. That there's also a right of first refusal. Should another party come along who has interest in phase two and make an offer? Then. In normal real estate activity. That would then be given to George and say. You have the right of first refusal to match that. So the town still has choices as we move through. But the RFP process was a two-stage process and said. At the end of it, you would sign a letter of intent for two parts. Phase one to commence, and if you met certain conditions, you would then. Have the option to carry on with phase two. So we intended bringing that forward to you in March. But this year in 23, we're kind of shifting gears. Because the developer is now going to be doing a lot of the work. Our role is going to be to oversee and manage the process to get through all of this. With the further refinement of the plans. And make sure that all of the rezoning and site plan work is being done so that this whole process is moving forward as planned. In addition, as we said before, there will be more public meetings, not just these two. There will be more public meetings, and let's be careful with the phraseology. There'll be open houses and discussions with the public. And then there will be, under the Planning Act, various statutory meetings, but we're talking about additional meetings that Georgian fully intends on doing. To further talk about the development of the plants, both in phase one and then repeat the process in phase two. So throughout that, our role is going to be overseeing all of this to make sure that we keep moving forward in at an effective pace. And then we want to continue to keep the public informed about what's happening through all of this. And we intend on putting out more publications and communications to the town. To keep them informed of where we're at in the process. Because as I said, it's going to change. George is going to be doing more of the work, but we are helping to stick handle it through so that we get to the goal that we all want. Next slide. So down to the potatoes, stuff, money. Audit financial statements for 2021. They were they were prepared by the Towns Auditor, BDO Canada. They were presented to our board on September the 30th, which were they were approved, and we also approved submitting them to council for information. So you will see later in the agenda tonight, they're all there. And you'll pass a motion to that effect. So we didn't, we're not going to go on that length about those. Next. So this is not an eye test. You've got a little closer to you. You've already seen it. But this is a financial report of how we spent money up until November the 30th. And there is a little arrow to help point you to our year-to-date variance at the end of. November is about 32,000, 33,000 variance. And so at the end of the year, after we've done a few other things, we expect that we should end up, as I reported earlier, slightly under budget. And as you will notice on this, we did spend a lot of money on legal fees. We had a budget of 25,000, and as you know, running a business. Or running a town, you put forward a budget. And that's based on your best information, or maybe it's just an allowance. But you put a a number in a budget. And so because of the process we were under, we. Felt that we needed to get very good real estate advice to ensure that we were well protected, not we being Midland Bay Landing, but the town also. So we did engage a legal firm to help us through this, and that costs us a lot of money. However. We as a corporation, like many. We managed to the bottom line. So some lines might be over, some lines might be under. And we managed to the bottom line, and we anticipated at the end of the year, we should be very close to budget, possibly a little bit under. So that is our report for today. You can flip to the next slide, which is ask for questions. So thank you for the opportunity to give you an overview of what we've been up to for 2022. What we plan for 23 and. A little bit of information about financials. I. Would invite any questions if you would like to ask any.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Gertehan. We'll start things off with councillor Bald. Bald, pardon me.
Oh, sorry. I was just wondering if you could give us a bit of background to with respect to the Georgian communities.
So Georgian Communities is a well-known developer headquartered in Barry. They have done a number of very successful developments in the Simcoe region. And have a track record that we should all be happy with as being a partner in developing this property with us. They also have, so that's the the head developer, but their team of consultants is a very robust team of consultants. Who have are part of the team and have through this exclusivity period been doing a lot of investigation work. And analysis to further advance the concept they put forward. So that they understand better. The feasibility and any issues that there might be with continuing on. They are a reputable developer. And we should be very happy to have found them. They are local, being Simcoe County. That's considerably different than if you were to engage a developer from the GTA. We live and work a little differently up here. So having the experience of developing other properties up here, we see is a huge benefit. One of the other developers comes from the Muskoka region, and the the third one. Came from down the GTA area. So we were very happy. That this is a local developer with local knowledge and experience.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Cotton.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to ask a question basically on the developer. From the experience, we haven't had a chance to to look at the. I guess resume or the background of Georgian. As a comparator, have they ever done a shoreline development in the past, or is it mostly just residential? That's something I didn't know. It can maybe comment on that.
So Georgian has done a lot of residential development. They've done less commercial development. However. One of the reasons that they stand out is the team that they have have extensive. Experience in waterfront development, and more importantly, in most cases, it's a redevelopment. So they have extensive experience in waterfronts and shoreline on the team. And we're very fortunate to have their depth of experience.
That's it. Oh, we follow up, like Tiffany Rekam.
Thank you. I have lots of questions. I just got one more. In the selection process for the developers, you had mentioned on one of your earlier slides. Was there ever a threshold as a comparator to say? For a developer to reach in order to qualify, or was it just basically? We just go through the resumes or the applications or their submissions, and this is how the selection process was done. So. I guess the question is, was there ever a threshold? For the developers to reach for them to qualify to be, I guess, in the selection process.
As I said, we ran a two-stage process. The first process was a request for prequalifications. And by its very nature, that's when. We asked. Any prospective developer to put forward their experience. And the threshold of number of units built, number of square feet of commercial, and all of those things that was very much part of the criteria. At the first stage. So you had to meet the hurdle in stage one. To then be selected to be shortlisted to go to stage two. So yes, that was done.
Okay, just a friendly reminder too that we need to make sure that our questions are focused on the AGM and the presentation. And not debating the worthiness of the. Selection of Georgian communities, or in fact, the worthiness of the project itself. That day will come. It will for sure, as the output from the input that's received by the by the corporation on the 11th. So. For today's purpose, just to try and stay on topic, we want to make sure we're directing our questions about the AGM update. The information about their finances that they've submitted. And. Just try and stay on topic. I I realize this is this is a big one for the community, and we can very easily meander and talk all night about this. But to be fair to the board, we want to stay on the AGM topic and save the other worthy debate for the time and a place that will be here in early March. With that said. Councillor East.
I just wanted to. Have you thanked the committee for giving Millen the ability to have transparency? And the ability to have their voices heard. I know over the next month or so, there's going to be a lot of. You know, boxing matches and possibly. A way of, you know. Promoting this, but I think they, you know, the committee really needs to have a pat on the back and say, thank you for hearing them. And thank you for keeping it transparent, because I know with, you know, real estate stuff. A lot of it seemed like it had to be not transparent. But now that you're giving them the ability to be heard, it should be praised. So that's all I wanted to say is thank you to you and the committee for hearing them.
Thank you very much, councillor.
Councillor Meredith.
Thank you. On your. Your financial statement, you have consultant fees. At 159,642. Are there clearer line items on on how that was spent and on your honorariums as well? On, you know, more detailed, or can you go into more detail with us on that right now or?
We have managed as a board. We so this, these statements you're receiving are summary statements. And this is a normal reporting for. This level of information at a board level, we provide summary information. The professional fees are made up of numerous professional fees. As I said, in 2022. We had a real estate advisor. We had the fairness advisor. And then in 2000, at the end of the year, we began spending legal fees. So all of those, so legal fees are a separate line item, but there are multiple consultants that make up the total. Of consulting fees. And. We don't provide at this level, we provide summary statements.
Any follow up?
Yes, thank you. So so we're not privy to any. Line by line information, like more detailed reports, we're just privy to the just the. Your oral balance of the spending, is that is that correct?
We've provided you with the summary, and I would defer to the chief financial officer to perhaps. Add some commentary of what kind of information you receive from the town when you get financial information.
Good evening. Thank you. So I just wanted to note on your your ask about the honorary honorarium specifically councillor Meredith. Those are outlined in the shareholder agreement, so that does specifically say what each director gets as as an honorarium if you're looking for. Detail that makes up the amount shown on the financial summary. Also with respect to details, so as Mr. Kerner hand spoke, the statements provided are. And counting of the individual areas of spend, similar to what you would receive for the town's budget. So there is a consulting line, there is an honorary and flying, there is a legal fees line. The detail of that is our accounting records, which is quite lengthy and not something that we would typically provide to council.
Thanks. As long as we're on that topic, it's a good time for me to mention too, at our first meeting, the deputy mayor and I. Submitted a motion that was approved by the board that we would be foregoing any honorariums for participating on the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation. That was a contentious topic last term, I know with me personally, so I I won't be collecting any extra funds nor will the deputy mayor by choice. And I also believe that there are members of the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation Board. Who also make that election. So.
That is correct.
For what it's worth, that expense line, you know, was lower for this year because of volunteering. or voluntary commitments that, uh, members of the board have made.
When it, when it comes to the financial statements, uh, I'm, I'm sure every board has their own. I, I don't. I don't, um, understand why it's, it's difficult um, for council to get this information. Um, this information, I mean, numbers here, obviously there, there's some big numbers and there's some small numbers and we want to dive deeper into the big numbers. And why did we go from seventy, um, you know, um, you know, from a hundred and what, what was it, twenty-one, over a hundred thousand dollars and, and under budget and now we're twelve thousand? So, so is it not our job to kind of, or is it staff's job, I guess, to do that and then just to report to us and then we just, um, say, okay, um, I just, I just, if I want to dive deeper in this and see where, where the actual money spent, who's getting their honorariums and and, you know, do we not have a right for that, to that information? And why is it so difficult to get or so it's not being seen in the package here?
Adam CFO. Oh, Mr. Campbell.
Uh, through your worship to Counselor Meredith, but Midland Bay Landing is a separate corporation and, uh, the shareholders, which you are, have delegated that fiduciary responsibility to that private corporation. And, uh, you know, through the Business Corporations Act, they are reporting today what's required under law to the shareholder. And, uh, you know, getting into the individual line items of expenditures, uh, you know, that that is not a, a requirement to, to share. It's not that it's top secret or anything, but that's just not the level of detail that's provided to the shareholder. That's the responsibility of the corporation to manage that. And the same discussion we'll have next week when we go through the town budget. You know, as, as the board directors, you will see summary information, not line-by-line details.
Any other questions from Mr. Gertehan? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much for your time and your presentation.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening and just for your information, a couple of other board members are hidden in the background and listening in tonight. So I want to thank them and acknowledge them for being here.
Thank, yes, I see Mr. Graham McIntyre online.
Mr. McIntyre, I believe is there and I believe Mr. Barber. Or maybe others I don't see.
Well, that's great. Another shameless plug for the two, uh, public, uh, meetings that are being held. February fourth is show and tell. And February eleventh, a week later is, uh, we're all ears. And, uh, it's a working session. So for those of the, although you cannot make the February fourth session, the good news is, uh, I'll have my computer and my wires and the talented staff at the MCC and we'll, we'll record that session since it's mostly a presentation, uh, and we'll have that uploaded so you can view it and you'll be able to submit written submissions. So if you're in Florida right now, watching or tuning in later, you'll be able to submit written submissions in that week, uh, from the fourth to the twelfth. Eleventh.
Well, I, I did suggest that it be the twelfth, but then I
Yeah, you're right. I think it was the twelfth at four P M.
Then I recall that the twelfth actually is a Sunday, so um, Monday, the thirteenth at four o'clock would probably be fine too.
Lovely. So that gives people a good week to, uh, have reviewed that video, uh, maybe clear up any misperceptions or still decide that they can't stand it at all, whatever, whatever your outcome is of, of learning from that, uh, February fourth session. Uh, we urge you to participate either at the February eleventh meeting in the roundtables or, uh, in a written submission. Uh, because we're keenly interested to hear what your thoughts are and, and then so is a developer, quite frankly. There may be some wonderful input that comes in that can form part of their final submission. So thank you again and, uh, we look forward to seeing you again on February fourth.
We'll see you soon.
Okay, with that said, we have a move, a motion moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor East that the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation annual report to the shareholder, us, dated January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, be received for information. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Next on the agenda was the, and I'll just pull it up here again so I can confer with my eyeballs. Uh, number five, which was the twenty twenty-one audited financial statements and the appointment of the auditor. And we have a motion moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Counselor Downer, that the approved Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation audited financial statements for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. He received his information and that BDO Canada LLP be confirmed as the external auditor for the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation for the calendar years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, with the option for two one-year extensions. Any discussion around that? All in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. And lastly, a motion moved by Counselor Ball, seconded by Counselor Meredith that the Board of Directors for the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation be confirmed as follows. Uh, it remains unchanged effectively. Bill Kurnahan, Director and Chair, John McIntyre, Director and Vice Chair, Robert Barber, Director, Zach Douglas, Director, Tina Fazio, Director, uh, myself, Mayor Bill Gordon, Bill Gordon as Director and Deputy Mayor Jack Cotton as Director. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. And then section seven, the agenda moved by Counselor Cotton, seconded by Counselor McDonald, that bylaw twenty twenty-three dash two, a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of this special meeting of council, the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation Annual General Meeting, held on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, be passed and enacted. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. And lastly, a motion by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor East at the Special Meeting of Council of Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation Annual General Meeting adjourned at five forty-three P M. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. That wraps.